Are there any questions on payroll?
Do you have any questions on payroll?
No.
I move to approve the payroll.
Is there any questions? All right, I have a second. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
I have a second.
And moving to second, any questions? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ours carried. Move on to payroll, or payroll, I just did payroll. Accounts payable. You know, a very good day.
Who is Century Business Systems? And Compliance One, it doesn't have a, it doesn't say what department paid something in professional services to Compliance One.
Okay, Century Business Systems is the county attorney's disagreeing for their copier.
For the copy machine?
Yes. And it's all a manual.
Is that the same one we use here in the courthouse?
No. I, we use Key Office. And then District Court is something that's towards the end, some financing, something. They all lease, District Court and County Attorney lease theirs, we outright purchase ours. And then we just pay and email make disagreeing report. What was the other one? I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Compliance One?
Okay. That is employee withholdings.
Oh, okay.
So I'm assuming that might have been one of those companies that was down there at the October...
Like someone trans, transferred or?
No, no, it's...
Want me to put on a presentation at the employee meeting?
Yeah, like Aflac. I'm gonna assume this Compliance One might have been like that Legal Shield where they were offering some kind of, I can go pull that netbook though.
No, I just wanted, it didn't have a, a department, so where is that paying from?
Each employee's withholding, so each department employee comes from.
Okay. What does employee withholding wire mean?
That means it's a person's employee withholding, so it's been removed from their paycheck. And then a wire means that it's being electronically transferred. Who is that for?
EFTS?
That's our Medicare and Social Security.
Oh, okay, okay.
And federal tax, okay. Medicare, Social Security, and federal tax.
Okay. Do you know what this December 1st invoice from first bank card from the Highway Department is? It says open records. What does that mean?
From bank card number one or number two?
It doesn't...
Listed separately.
It just says first bank card highway.
Okay, so that's the Highway Department's. I'm almost thinking that maybe, maybe here. Cause I don't think we pay for their hotels, so I'm assuming part is hotels. Or case.
Well, it's only forty dollars. Do we mandate that all the departments get their fuel from the Highway Department? Okay. So they, we don't, no one's necessarily getting fuel unless they're stuck somewhere.
Yeah, or, or something, you know, occasionally they'll have a problem with the pumps or something and they'll have to go somewhere else. Now, I say all departments. The outlying fire departments usually get theirs.
Okay.
They fill up here sometimes if they're in the area or whatever. By and large, the fuel is cheaper because they're quantity redbottling.
Okay, it says it's open records requests for OS 49 and OS 57 to the Kansas Department of Agriculture. So the Kansas Department of Agriculture, he asked for something and they charge us open records request for.
Okay. No, that's okay. I just didn't understand what it meant. That makes sense though.
Probably some drainage stuff from them or something.
I wonder if maybe an old permit, permit or something?
Could be.
I know that they were doing the research on the Highland Dam, but I don't know what number it is. I don't think it's either of those. Unless that's what they call it and they were applying for a permit to do those tubes, then they replaced or repaired and bought to Culver. Maybe they got to permit for that and where they could do that.
Yeah, I think they were, they had applied for them on the, the one in Whackers and then the one down the road from Whackers there.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that. He said that they were working on Dry Drive and North 20th of Culver there and then a wing wall unless there's something that they make done. Do you think where they can do that work?
So explain to me how this works again with Randan. It's saying we're cutting checks to Randan on behalf of the city?
Yes, so...
What fund does that come out of?
Refuse and the income from the cities come into refuse fund, so Fund 17. And the city's bill for our solid waste disposal fee, the collection fee, and then our twenty-five dollar, or sorry, twenty-five cent administrative charge fee. So then when it, when we get the city's checks each month, we split it out three ways within the refuse fund.
What, is the refuse fund under the general fund?
No, it's fund number seventeen.
Seventeen.
It used to be a long time ago, so the department is seventeen twelve, so sometimes on the department reports it lists it with. But it should be a complete separate fund. So what we're paying Randan is for the four cities of collection. So we tell him how much the city's collected for the month. And then he sends us a bill for those, for the amount of collections that they say that they collected on their utility bills.
So all transactions with him go through Fund 17-12?
Yes.
Is there a way...
Well, let me, let me correct that. The city collection part of it does. Then we pay Randan to pick up our trash, the dumpsters here, the Hill Department, so those come out of each individual funds.
Okay, I get that. And then does he pay a fee when he dumps at our, at our landfill?
No, because the seventy-two dollars that we're collecting for every resident pays for that. We don't charge at the landfill except for construction, demolition, and tires. Everything that is disposed of at the landfill is for free.
Is there a way that when, when we get this printout for the accounts payable that it would say? I know she tries to put in the department and most of the time it's there. Is there a way to put in the fund?
There is not. I have asked for that enhancement for years. It used to be on there when we were with our old software provider. They have been unhandled. Unless we pay for a customized program, no other county needs that broke out. Some of the counties use voucher systems. We've never used a voucher system. I wouldn't even know what to do with voucher system.
I was just curious that they wouldn't want that to know because then you can track the fund instead of the department.
I think that's because they probably use the voucher system.
Oh.
Which I can, I can have Hannah's, this report also includes mid-month, so it gives you the entire month's worth of accounts payable that we paid. But I can have Hannah, you know, give you a department by, by basically exposed by department. So it's quite a few more pages because then you would have, you know, each member under each department. Say like for example AT&T or Rainland, etc.
Right, right.
No, I mean, it's... We can start sending, we can send that out, that's... I wish it could list numbers. I've asked for that, but... I'll write it down though, cause I wonder if they could build me a query this special which, which out without...
Changing your whole software.
Yeah.
What's that one called again?
What?
What's it called again?
Our software, uh, contact.
Contact, that's right.
I'll write that down. They might be able to query. The report might just not look the same.
More questions on accounts payable?
Which, which number is your record number for which, for the payments? Are these all?
Ten, two.
I'm saying, okay, so your control number, what is that?
Um, that's like the input number that the computer system applies to.
For each specific payment?
Yeah. For each end of data entry.
And then how do we know for these payments, which one is an electronic payment versus a check, a rendered? Does it say? Am I...
I, I think it should say wire yes or wire no, but I'm not, I don't kind of know what this one looks like.
Wire right here.
Oh, yeah.
Some of them, there's a wire show, like there's one, Wells Fargo.
There's one.
Boy, we're looking for.
Okay, I see. Okay, okay. Okay, I move to exclude check number 43399. To O'Hare Law LLC. From accounts payable. Before approving.
Do you have a second? Motion to aye is for like a second. Do I have a motion to approve payroll?
Payables.
Payables, I'm sorry. Payables, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the payables from month of December. Total amount is $339,775.44.
Do you have a second? Do I have a second? Is there discussion?
Yes, I would like you to consider excluding that payment because I will not be accepting the contract until it has been determined by the Attorney General that we are in compliance. So if you would like to approve it, you can approve it separately. And you two have continued to do this ever since it was brought to our attention that we're potentially in violation of the state statute there. So you're now aware of the situation. You can't claim that you've unknowingly been paying that. If you'd like to, if you'd like to approve it separately, I will go ahead and agree with you, you know, to continue to approve accounts payable on a monthly basis. But until then, you're, you're putting yourselves in jeopardy and you're liable for making that decision because it's been brought to your attention continually.
Any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, o's?
Nay.
Motion is carried. Okay. Transfer of funds. First one we have is Resolution 23, County Health Department. Let's transfer fifteen thousand to the capital outlay fund from County Health Department.
So do we have their final report for their budget to know?
Oh, okay, let me show you what I do. Sorry, it's kind of written over, but basically what I do at the end of the year. And I probably really should have amended, the only fund that really should have been amended was the road and bridge. But by the time we got the... But by the time we got the end of November done and where I was at, I couldn't get the publication in to meet the ten day requirement. So, um, we couldn't amend. But what I do is basically I take the cash balance at the end of whatever the last daily statement was updated. And then I minus our pending expenses, which is whatever we're paying at, for accounts payable. Get our cash. And then this is the amount that is required for carryover or to fund the budget for the twenty-eighteen budget.
What we, what we assumed was going to roll over.
Yeah, what we budgeted would be our beginning cash. So then that gives us our total. And then we do our budget balance, um, minus the pending expenditures. Um, if we had any budget amendments, we'd put that in there and then our total. And then I always put in what our prior year, twenty-seventeen expenses were because they tend to be pretty much the same.
After the year's concluded?
Concluded, yeah. And we allow prior year in January, February, and March. And then after March, it comes out of the current year budget if for some reason they haven't submitted their invoices.
So this is-
So then we look at this number versus this number to see what we have in excess for cash and what we have in excess for budget. So for the health department, for example, it's here. So she had sixteen thousand remaining in budget and twenty-nine thousand dollars in cash even after what is required. So then I kind of do an, an estimate. So I gave her a little bit more, I mean, than what she's normally been spending for prior year. But we cannot exceed the budget amount whatsoever. So then I do that for each of the funds to help kind of determine what we have to spend. And it's only a recommendation, you don't have to do it. Um, the problem is like specifically for the health department is because they do get those grants from the state of Kansas that if you lower their levy, then they cannot-
They're less eligible for, or less eligible for less.
They cut them dollar for dollar. And so therefore, um, like with the health department, you want as little as cash.
On hand.
Yeah. So, um, I do that for each of the funds. And then, um, I don't know if you guys want to talk about the, the nursing home one right now or not, or if you want to wait until we tackle that one. But for example, like my election fund, then I kind of look in what each of the funds themselves are doing. And like my election fund, I had excess money in about eleven thousand, uh, forty-eight dollars. So because the tax lid is on, we're not able to increase the, um, levy anymore within County General, but that one point four percent. But every odd year you have less election than what you have even year. So we chose to keep it level. And so we'll have more money in the odd years, but hopefully, I'm going to have to update the equipment. So the thoughts is, is it can get transferred into the capital improvement fund where my election equipment is budgeted to be able to spend from, to purchase equipment. But this time around, in, in two thousand and six, all my election equipment was pretty much paid for by, uh, the federal funds. Um, except for the RTEL printers and things like that, that I added as add-ons. There will be no help for the future. So, um, I'm kind of looking at probably election wise, we'll have to do something in the next two years. I just don't know if our equipment can, can hold much longer, so. Um, nursing home wise, they had, uh, forty-one thousand left. I took, or actually they have fifty-four thousand dollars left. And if you remember, they brought in the doors, um, and the floor and et cetera. They didn't have any bids yet. So I took off the twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, so it leaves forty-one thousand. I suggested thirty-five thousand, but I think I amended it to say thirty thousand because I forgot about the soffits and the, and the-
We have pending-
Yeah.
Bills to finish the repairs.
Yeah, the soffits.
Were we fully compensated from the insurance? Oh, no, but that was in addition.
That was in addition.
Did we receive our insurance money?
Not yet. And, uh, Ull's not done with it yet either. So I went ahead and, and left that money out. Yeah.
You gotta do all the trimming.
And in previous years, the, we were able to do, like I looked back and we actually did more than a couple of years. I want to say we did two thousand and three, four, five, and two thousand and nine. We did transfers to, and I may be off on the years. We did transfers directly from County General to the home for the aged for the excess funds. And that, those years, you could just put on the, the state budget transfer resolution and it was fine because as long as we adopted a resolution. Now they want the state statutes to specifically allow those transfers. And the auditor and I worked, Jeff, um, we couldn't find a specific resolution that allowed a transfer from leftover County General Fund to the nursing home, or nursing home, home for the aged. So he suggested, or I, I kind of said, what if we would do the capital improvement fund? And you can definitely do the capital improvement fund. So what we did was put it in as the capital improvement fund. And then I have a resolution, the very last one, amending the resolution to the capital improvement fund to just earmark specifically the thirty thousand dollars for the nursing home. Um, because technically we've never really used any expenses out of capital improvement fund to pay for the nursing home expenses because the rent, et cetera, was supposed to cover that. So, um, all of the, this is, you know, subject to whatever your guys' desire is. But I thought with the, with the fire doors, you know, we know that that expenses there. We know that there's probably more expenses that could, could come out, but.
I talked to him the other day. He's, he's having trouble getting bids on.
Fire doors?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, really?
They're wanting to replace frames and all. He's trying to find someone who'll do it without replacing the frames.
So I kind of jumped around a little bit.
Yeah, let's start with the first one.
Your question about Resolution twenty-three?
No, I moved to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we need, uh, the specifics on that?
Discussion.
I pursuant to provisions of KSA sixty-five two oh four, offering the transfer of fifteen thousand from the Lincoln County Health Fund to the Lincoln County Capital Outlay Fund.
So you're going to say what the resolution is at the motion?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you want all these on?
Well, I'll just, I have the original. Is it okay if we just wait till we get all done?
Yep.
If it is, no, I need it to change.
Twenty-four, transfer three hundred and sixty-five thousand from Roden, from the road fund to special machinery fund.
Okay, with that one, in the years past, you guys have chosen to do special machinery. You can choose to go with the county, um, special road. Um, I think the past two or three years, you chose just to directly go into special machinery to help with the cost of the motor graders.
Um, what is in, do we know what's in the special machine, machinery fund?
Zero right now.
Did we use all of it with the last purchase and this?
Yes.
Okay.
Off the blows, I mean.
Let, let me-
Is this the last year for purchasing?
No, no, this one or more more?
There is none.
Special machinery is zero.
Took it all and then had to probably add a little bit more too.
Yes, and I had talked to Jeff about the fact that I probably should have amended the budget. And so, um, what I had kind of told him is, is there was quite a bit more money that we could have amended for the Roden Bridge Fund. Roden Bridge. They have six hundred and six thousand and they had four hundred and forty-three thousand left in budget. But then we had to adjust off the reimbursements because they didn't meet over the ninety thousand. So they have three hundred and seventy-five thousand left in budget. So I could have done an amendment between six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. And what we discussed maybe doing is, um, when you get ready to do the equipment purchase, we can amend the Roden Bridge Fund early in the year to account for that equipment that they sold last year and, um-
Because that's not in here?
Yeah.
It, it's in the cash part, it's not in the budget part because I didn't amend the budget.
It, the money, it doesn't go back into special machinery?
The, the, the income from selling the, it just, okay, yeah.
Goes into their general fund. Um, so that's something that we could do when we get ready to do the two motor graders is just go ahead and amend their budget. And then if we need to amend it at the end of the year, we can, but just to go ahead and do it at the beginning of the year to account. And basically what I would do is, is do an amended budget with everything exactly the same except for the cash. Beginning cash balance would be higher. So then that would allow you to be able to-
Spend.
Yeah. So it's kind of some options because we can wait till the end of the year, but I don't want to get to where we were this year. I, I just should have, I really thought we had another day. But to advertise when I was ready to advertise, if we would only had nine days because of the way the month fell.
Tore it out.
So, and you have to have a ten day notice and paper. So those, that, that's your choice. You can, you know, choose to do special machinery. I have it special machinery right now, but I can always split and do capital improvement, or sorry, um, special road.
Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
We're gonna use it for equipment probably.
I'll move, we transfer three hundred and sixty-five thousand from the road fund to the special machinery fund.
Okay, so move to approve Resolution twenty-
Yeah, twenty-four, yeah. I'm sorry.
Twenty seventeen, twenty-four.
Twenty seventeen, twenty-four, yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any questions?
No.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alex, is there a voting?
Ayes, aye.
Okay, we're on Resolution two thousand seventeen, twenty-five. It is to transfer, uh, fire departments budget to special equipment. Beverly, five thousand, first rule, twenty-two thousand. Hunter, rule, twenty-nine thousand. Sylvan, rule, eleven thousand. I guess the only one missing is Barnard and there was not enough, Dawn?
No, there was not.
Okay.
I would move to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-five. Transfer to the-
Do I have a second?
A second.
Been moved in second. Any questions?
Yes, do you, is there, is there a separate for each one of those rural fire districts? Is there a separate capital outlay in addition to the special equipment?
No.
Okay.
No, they just, um, have the two.
I think they consider about everything equipment wise, air packs, trucks.
But I mean, what, what about building? What about the property itself? Would something needed done to the property and?
They can take it out of that special equipment or a regular operating. Like, uh, Denmark Fire built their new fire station with, um-
That's what I was wondering. They don't have to, it's not a capital outlay, that's just their.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried for twenty, two thousand seventeen, twenty-six. Deals with the noxious weed. Transfer ten thousand dollars from the noxious weed budget to the capital outlay fund for noxious weed. I assume that's to buy another, to buy a truck when we have to replace one.
So he's getting pretty close.
Maybe, yes, he is.
Well, I think we had discussed earlier in the year that they probably didn't have enough, if they would have put something big, bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's thirty-nine thousand to pin it right now.
Got on that big and I'll move.
Have a motion to approve.
I would move to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, noxious weed.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We're on two thousand seventeen, twenty-seven. Board of Commissioners to transfer to the Lincoln County Capital Outlay Fund. We have ten thousand from the general fund election fund, thirty thousand from the nursing home, is that right, Dawn?
Yeah.
And forty thousand from the general.
Yes.
For a total of eighty thousand to capital improvement.
And what you're saying is that, that line item designated with the thirty thousand, is that what this last page is?
Yes, that, that would amend the, the capital improvement fund has to have a plan and that is a A is the plan. And so, um, I removed, I can't remember what was still on there. Um, oh, the repeater, when they funded the repeater, that one there. Um, so I removed it and then added just kind of the verbiage with the limit dollar amount to the nursing home. But that is what's in the plan right now and you guys can amend that too if there's something on there.
This is-
Rather than have a capital outlay for each one of those deals, we just have a gen, big capital outlay and it can be utilized, could be utilized for most anything if we wanted to amend.
Twenty-six, right?
Yes.
We haven't put too much in it the last few years.
Um, last year we put the three hundred thousand that was, um, carryover from when we thought Tall Grass was going to-
Yeah.
Was going to protest their taxes and they didn't end up protesting. So we didn't, you know, reduce the levy that one year.
Yeah, we held it.
But other than that, very few years have we, it, it used to be history was, you know, even before I was, um, clerk, was that they would levy a hundred thousand a year to put into that fund just to help with the upkeep of the buildings. And I will tell you, we are going to have to do something about the front steps. And probably something when we do fix that about the handicap door. They did have to come and fix it, but there's water running into the handicap door panel and causing some corrosion. But they were able to fix it this time, but.
They'll have that all tore out, so they shouldn't be able to do something with it. That was put in as part of the drainage project twenty years ago, probably wasn't it?
I think it's part of the, uh, elevator, the handicapped accessible. Because I think that's all been there since that ramp. Because then we did the drainage project since I've been here.
Are we still going to, um, apply for the grant because, through the, through the historic, historical preservation?
I think we should.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, I guess.
Twenty?
I've been thinking about it, that, uh, my feeling is that that's probably an item that we could easily take out of excess web over that we're doing the rest, nursing home last year, you know? And then I think this one should be the next project. Because I think this is going to be expensive. I think it's going to cost a lot of money because I think they're going to tear that out about, aren't they? And start over.
Yeah.
And it's got to make, meet the historical society.
Right.
And I'm not sure, I'm, I wonder if they're going to do something about that handicap. You think we're going to have to change that when we do that?
I don't know.
You mean the entrance to the front?
Yeah. I, 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 I look for that, maybe having to all be revamped, but I don't know.
Like handicap accessible straight to the first line?
I don't know. I, I don't, no, I think, I think-
I think our grade is too steep.
Oh, oh.
And I think, I'm not sure that that's very good. The access goes clear out there.
And if they're handicapped.
Yeah, they have to go way down there to get, you know, and there's no way to get up on the curb.
You can almost make it an L, come out and go that way, tear out some of those bushes.
The thing is, it's got to look, make the building, cannot change its looks.
Right, right. Well, the structure itself, so that'd probably be the steps, but we can probably do whatever we want with the sidewalk, it's the ramp.
Toilet put the limestone on top of that wall was the-
But I, I'm a little concerned that we're in, we're not in compliance.
Wasn't it eighty, twenty?
I think so, but maybe with a maximum.
Yeah, it was a maximum, or, and it wasn't very much, I don't think, the maximum.
But I think that's something we need to start first year.
That's what I was thinking.
Who are we going to designate to solicit bids for that?
Normally what happens when we're applying for grants is we, because we pay North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission, we give them money to begin with. We have them help us write the grant and then- we give them money to begin with, we have them help us write the grant, and then if we're approved, then they start soliciting bids. But I'm gonna assume that at some point, we need to have an architect to give them some assistance.
Architect's gonna have to be involved there just to verify the handicap accessibility and stuff. There's no way around that, I don't think.
And.
It would probably be more financially efficient to ask whoever's doing the bids to, to contract their own consultation for that, and just get that verified through them. I mean, if we pay twice, if we pay the architect to come, I mean, it's basically what we did with the nursing home. Where, you know, instead of, for example, Street went ahead and I, I assume they're doing some of those changes? They're working on some of those changes?
Couple of changes.
So if that person who's going to take on the bid and, and actually do the work, can have that third party accessible to them directly, I don't think we need to be in the middle of that. That's just an extra ride on the merry-go-round. I would assume that anyone that wants to take on that size of a project would be able to consult someone on their own for ADA compliance for.
But it may, it may be ideal of the grant that you have to have an architect growing.
Well, if that's the case, we'll be limited.
You know, I think.
But I don't think we should jump the gun and search for that first. I think we need to get someone who's willing to do the work and be, and do that legwork for us.
All the grants that they got on fire stations and stuff like that, they had to have an architect to draw up the plans and everything.
That's what drives the cost.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Okay, any other questions on this resolution?
Um, yes, the, okay, so you're saying the, that line item, three thousand, but the total is seventy thousand coming out of the general?
Eighty thousand coming out of the general.
Wait, I thought it was thirty and forty.
Ten, thirty. Ten, thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I forgot the ten.
Yeah, that way.
So the eighty total, but you're saying that we're designating up to, not to exceed the amount of thirty, can be taken from there? To, and apply. And that twelve thousand two hundred and fifty is going to be left in the, in the carryover. So what, so what is the total carryover then for the, where are we at here?
For the.
County general, okay.
So here's after what we knew, so you take two hundred and twenty-two thousand minus the eighty thousand will be our cash carryover.
And is this what we budgeted as a cash carryover?
Uh, no, this is what our budget is remaining.
What did we budget as a cash carryover?
Cash carryover.
Amount of money we have left that we could spend.
Yes, cash carryover that was budgeted as part of the two thousand eighteen budget is this eighty-three thousand.
But you're saying it's this minus this?
Is what we'll end up having in excess of the eighty-three thousand. And see, I probably could have amended this budget by a hundred thousand as well to transfer even more. But that will just leave you guys with, that will be your fluctuation for raises and things like that, so.
Okay.
So the two funds I actually could have amended was general fund and road and bridge fund. So what will happen with this is we'll have a hundred and forty-two thousand plus the eighty-three thousand. So we'll actually start the year off with two hundred thousand dollars compared to what we thought we were going to be at eighty-three thousand.
But, but this is, this eighty is pre-designated to be in this multi-year capital improvement plan, and what is this fund called?
It's called the Capital Improvement Fund. And it's fund twenty-six on your register.
And this will be our cash carryover into the two thousand eighteen budget, unless anything that comes in January, February, March, or something like that.
And last year, this was the amount that we had, so.
Now, if we get a bill.
It would have to be, it would have to be something that was actually purchased prior to.
That's what I'm asking, yeah, we can't just assign it if it comes in new. It's, it's just anything that hasn't been billed and deducted this year.
So, for example, I have four thousand dollars left in my budget, so I had the bid for replacing all three computers being two thousand and something. I just didn't really think I, I could afford the computers and the labor. So I went ahead and approved to purchase the computers, so that would leave me about, um, I don't know, two thousand dollars in my fund. But what I'm gonna do is, is I approved it, so the invoice will come in dated in two thousand seventeen. I'll buy the computers and use that, and then I'm gonna use labor in two thousand eighteen budget to pay to, to install them and get them set up. So that's kind of the types of invoices that will come in. There will be some of the departments that knew that they were, they had a little extra. But.
There'll be things that were purchased right before the twenty-fifth or right after, in this last week, that won't be on the.
I mean, we try really hard, but, and then the utility bills, like, if they come in with the date of December, then we take them back. And what, how we do that with utility bills is we look back, have we paid twelve during the month? Did we take it out prior year, or did we take it out prior year? Because if for some reason, um, we'd already paid twelve, then we would move that to, like, in two thousand eighteen. But pretty much what happens is the auditor looks at some of those prior year invoices to see when, when they were approved.
So then this twelve thousand two hundred and fifty that's going to be just left into this cash carryover for the general, what we, what we actually need to do then, the line item that we approved for the nursing home is still at one twenty, right?
Right, I just haven't adjusted it down, but I'll probably go and adjust it down, so that way we.
How do we know that that's gonna happen now?
That it's adjusted down. I can do that now.
According to the, what we passed, which was twelve thousand two hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that that, that, that doesn't go by the wayside when we do this.
No, and the auditors, um, normally do all of those adjustments when they're doing their financial statements, when they come and they audit us, so they'll have.
Do we need a separate resolution for that?
No, not necessarily, because you guys.
We, we voted, but we didn't make a resolution.
No, and we're not transferring anything, we're just reducing, so.
Okay.
But I will get it reduced, so that when you get your print out for the end of December, it, it shows the hundred and twenty minus twelve thousand two hundred and fifty. Remember that dollar amount is.
Good.
So it'll show like a hundred and eight. I have it in my head, I'm sorry, a hundred and eight seven fifty eight thing. Are you okay with thirty thousand? Do you want to change that, or?
I think it's fine.
My only question is, you know, in the future, if we're looking at two and a half years left of using that facility as is, if we are doing these changes for the fire doors and things like that, um, well, even the floor, what's going, you know, what's going to be the requirement? Or what are we spending as far as what's not gonna be a requirement if that, if the purpose of that building changes?
Well, I think the part the fire doors are in, or the part that is proposed to have the assisted living apartments expanded into, which would require fire doors.
Okay.
Hey, do I have a motion?
You know, it's difficult because we don't know. There, it's, it's a question mark as to what is gonna continue to be a nursing home. Is it not gonna be a nursing home? I, I guess I treat it as though it is until I see.
Otherwise?
A movement in the other direction, I guess, which I haven't seen yet.
Do I have a motion for resolution twenty-seven?
I've moved to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, twenty-eight. Is writing off bad debts and clearing write-offs from the county ambulance service. These are just the ambulance, this isn't county health, is it?
No, they, two of theirs, I believe, are Canadian workers.
Okay, all right, so this, for the county ambulance, the bad debts are twenty-six thousand, sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents, and the ride, insurance write-offs are thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents, making a total of sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, seventeen cents.
What, what does that mean to clear insurance write-offs?
When you, when we build Medicare, they, we accept assignment, or Blue Cross Blue Shield, we accept assignment, and they reduce what we're billing.
So it's the difference between our billable and what we received? Okay, but what about the debts? Is there, is that, um, individual self-pay type?
Yeah, that you can't close, probably. Like, the interstate being in there on the highway, it tends to be a lot of those transient people. We used to do a collection agency, and they were never really successful. Um, anybody that lives in the state of Kansas, we submit to the state set-off program, and.
You already have?
We tend to be kind of successful with that, but not, you know, it may take ten years to pay off.
So we are clearing sixty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents from the ambulance service accounts receivable? But there's nothing to transfer?
No. The accounts receivable is the, what we're billing.
So we're not moving any of this cash carryover, fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars, eighty cents into the capital outlay?
Right-hand side is budget, left-hand side is cash. They didn't have the cash, so if you look on the left-hand side, what's the dollar amount?
Fifty-seven, well, uh, yeah, fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and five?
On the cash.
Well, the required carryover is fifty-one thousand, so the leftover cash is the six thousand two hundred and thirty-two.
So that's all that they had.
So why are we not moving that to the capital outlay, just because?
Because there may be expenses that aren't on there.
Yeah, um, their prior year was like four hundred and eighteen, but I normally leave like a two thousand dollar, I mean, we can do a transfer for four thousand.
But isn't this required carryover, aren't, when we do our budget in the summer, aren't we looking at the required carryover as being able to cover any pending expenses that come in?
No, it'll carry over.
Why?
It'll carry over.
The, okay, the cash carryover is what, when we do that budget, the very top line, you have to have that in order, you have to make sure that you have that in order to fund the budget.
Yeah, but I thought we had already looked at what some of these prior year expenses come in as, and we're already counting that as deductible from the cash carryover when we do the total budget amount.
No, these will actually hit the budget. So then what happens is, for example, let's just use these, let's say this is five thousand dollars, and let's say this cash carryover was only five thousand. And let's say, or let's just say that they came in with bills that we had, they hadn't submitted, and there was five thousand dollars worth. If this was only five thousand, it's going to hit the two thousand seventeen budget, but then it's gonna reduce the cash carryover that was available, the cash beginning bounds to zero. So then that's five thousand dollars you have to make up already.
I understand that, but I, when we looked at the budget, we talked about, when we were doing the budget, we talked about prior year expenses coming in against our budget.
They'll come in against the two thousand seventeen budget, which will then affect what the beginning cash is. So you, so you want, you have to have this, this is the amount that you must have. Then you need to have a little bit more cash, and that's why, that's why I listed this number here. You have to have a little bit more cash to account for anything that is here, but this you have to have, or you're already in trouble for the next year.
It'll carry over.
It will carry over, yes.
It reduces the ad valorem tax on the next year, whatever's carried over.
Well, not if we just keep increasing the amount of carryover.
It'll carry over.
No, no, because your carryover, your, whatever you carry over for cash is then computed into your two thousand nineteen budget.
Yeah.
What you wanna do is transfer it out and get it out. So then it doesn't, so then you're levying the, the same dollar amount.
Yeah.
But anything that's carried over is actually going to reduce the two thousand nineteen levy.
It'll reduce the levy for two thousand nineteen.
Unless you increase expenditures to match the amount that's being carried over.
Which is done every single year. Right?
Well, it depends. I think some, some are, some aren't, but.
I mean, I can, I can pull up a resolution, we can do a resolution for like four thousand dollars or five thousand dollars if you want. I mean, history shows four hundred dollars, I, I, I don't know. I don't know what they ordered or what they need to order, or.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna go in, it's gonna go in, it's gonna offset the ad valorem tax. So it, it, it lowers it, you know, we can transfer it out.
But it doesn't change, what I'm saying is, I, I understand, my personal view is, let it carry over, don't stash it in the capital outlay, especially if you're not gonna use it. However, we talked about not having enough money in the capital, I think, and that's sixteen thousand or something in there. And we talked about, you know, where that money was gonna come from. So in this particular budget situation, I know we're not talking about a large dollar amount, but the, the theory here is, this is an instance when I would say you take that cash and use it to put towards that future expense you know you're having, rather than let it carry over. In the general fund, let it carry over, because you don't know where you're gonna use it in any of those various, you know, for, for any of those various reasons. When we, when we transfer that eighty thousand, what is left in that capital, what is that called?
The capital improvement.
The capital improvement now, fund twenty-six, what is currently in there that is carrying over by itself before we transfer eighty into it at the end of the year?
Okay, in twenty-six, fund twenty-six, we have six hundred and twelve thousand dollars in there.
So we're adding eighty to that?
Yes, thirty will be earmarked specifically for.
Well, no, it's not, it's not earmarked specifically for, because this wording says we can repair or restore or rehabilitate the nursing home in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand.
Right.
We don't have to.
No, we don't have to.
Correct, you don't have to.
No, I, I, that's proper, I think. But what you're saying now is we will have six hundred and ninety-two thousand
Yes.
in our capital improvement fund, fund number twenty-six.
Yes, and I'm not sure if.
Why are you getting red, Aljo?
I'm hot, why?
I feel like you're maybe frustrated that I'm expressing and disclosing that we're gonna have six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in our capital improvement fund.
I'm not sure if R and R, I, I forgot to look, but I'm not sure if Streets has submitted the bill yet for redoing the plumbing, the sewer work over the sheriff's office that had to be done, but if for some reason, if it hasn't been.
If it exceeds their budget, they can't fund that, we do it out of our.
They would take it out of that.
I understand that.
It, it wasn't in next month's payables.
My issue with holding on to almost seven hundred thousand dollars is we don't have a plan for it. Now, I see this plan says that we can do this and we can do that, but last year, it was also stated that we were gonna hold on to that money to replace the backhoe. I don't know about the bus and things like that, so we have to actually decide what we are going to do with it, because this seven hundred thousand dollars about getting to there is useful, but not hoarding it or hanging on to it. And if we're talking about taking money out of the web fund, which isn't making us much interest anyhow, but if we're talking about using that for certain projects, we need to look at this money too, that's just, it's not earning us anything.
Right, now, like, okay, that plan, when you start a town, the walking bottom trailer is gonna have to be replaced at some point in time out of the landfill, and so that money has.
So how much is that?
Fifty to sixty.
I'd say, I was saying it was a hundred thousand the last time.
But these are some of the things I think we need to, in the beginning of the year, I would like to see us sit down with, start with this list, which I know some of these are from prior years too.
But we don't wanna replace it until we need to.
I understand that, but we still have to have numbers and a priority and say, you know, this is gonna be within one year, this is gonna be within two years, these are the costs, and see where we are with this number, because, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not comfortable as commissioner, and maybe you are, and you'll have to express that, but I'm not comfortable as a commissioner saying that we are one of the highest taxed counties in the whole state. I appreciate that we're not in debt, I appreciate that we're not paying on notes. However, it is very concerning that the majority of the money is coming from a small percentage of the people, and we are extremely high taxed for this state, and we can't even tell them what the first thing we're gonna do with this six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is.
Why are we gonna go buy a trailer until we need to buy one? Why are we gonna go buy a backhoe until we need to buy one? You know, that money's put back a little bit at a time to replace that stuff.
Instead of living it in the current calendar year. I can tell you what they're gonna spend it on, you're gonna spend it on a backhoe, you're gonna spend it on, um, a walking bottom trailer, you're gonna probably spend about sixty thousand dollars of it on the election equipment when the time comes around, because we have to have an ADA compliant machine in both of the polling places, and that's part of the reason why we are down to two, is that comes in an expense. And then I can tell you that we need to do something about the front steps of the courthouse. I don't know what that cost is. We also need to paint the courthouse.
Oh, the trim.
The trim, and, um.
But here's the thing, we need to be getting, we need to be gathering. But here's the thing, we need to be getting, we need to be gathering bids for those, though. You know, we need to have, we need to have a little bit of a plan. I mean, I know we talked early on in the year about getting bids for some of these stone bridges to get some of that repaired done, because every season that we let those go, it's more deterioration, and it costs more to repair that. And we don't have bids for those kind of things. So, I think we need to make a list. It's a, it's a due list, is basically what it is.
Well, I think we can pay the stone bridge repairs out of the capital improvement fund. That's a highway department expense.
Well, it's still ours.
Well, and it used to be there's thirty thousand dollars a year to do that in the special bridge, but I think this year, though, that you were limited it to the two mil amount, so.
But we overspent it anyhow. We did that COVID stuff a couple of.
But we determine where this money goes. It doesn't matter if the highway department has its own, I mean, if we're in dire straits and we need to spend our money because the highway department can't fix that particular bridge, that's on us to make that decision.
The rule of thumb with the capital improvement fund is, it's county general funds. So, anything that county general fund can pay for, you can pay for. The reason why you have a list is so that you hold down to it.
But these emergency nine-one-one road signs, that's not out of the general fund typically?
It says labor. And no, it's not typically. It used to be able to be paid for out of the nine-one-one, now it cannot. So, that might be something you want to change. If you want to change, that you want the nine-one-one road signs to come out, and you want to start a plan, you can change that. But, but typically, county general, the money from that capital improvement fund is from the county general fund. So, anything, basically, the county general fund can pay for any fund that there is. Our rule of thumb has always been with that, is only the funds that contribute to it is who has received the benefit from it. However, like, for example, the walking bottom trailer and the backhoe, when the refuse department was in the county general fund, we were able to transfer money. Now that they're in a separate fund, they barely are making enough money, our fees that we're generating are barely making enough money that they don't really have carryover.
Wait, who, for the?
Refuse fund.
For the walking bottom.
And, and even.
Wait, is the refuse the same as the, okay, I'm confused. When you say refuse, are you also talking about?
This is landfill.
The landfill.
Yeah.
So, right here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
They're going to have a six thousand dollar, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollar cash carryover. They have twenty-five thousand dollars in their budget.
Okay, but we just spent eighty thousand dollars from the landfill to crush concrete.
Correct, and that's why.
And that was all accumulated from the landfill, running, as it does, collecting fees and maintaining its budget. So, it's not fair to say that they can't, that they're barely, whatever you said just a minute ago.
Well, they are. I mean.
No, we spent their money. We spent their money. We spent eighty thousand dollars, and we have a pile of useless.
To take care, to take care of their concrete pile, you know.
That is eighty percent of what we budgeted for gravel for our entire county is what we spent.
You understand, the reason that was crushed up is because we were out of room. We had no place to pile anymore. So, they crushed it up so we could, concrete, metal, all that stuff. There was so much concrete piled up out there for the last, for the last forty years, that we were out of room to pile metal. The tree pile couldn't get any bigger. They were piling grass up in a whole nother place because there wasn't any place over there to put it.
Okay, Terry, but you can't, you can't convince me that there weren't any other options to maneuver or manipulate anything physical up there, when I can't even get a complete estimate on a bridge replacement within several weeks. I can't even get a priority list of bridges around the county, you know, to say which ones are more important or high, more, you know, higher traffic than others, which I haven't gotten that core request yet.
I sent you an email last Friday that it's here, the bridge though.
Okay, um, that just reminded me of that. That's okay. But I'm saying, you, you can't convince me that there wasn't another option than paying a company to come and crush it when we're not using it. I mean, the few loads that we've taken out of there doesn't nearly justify eighty percent of the entire budget for the whole county's gravel. It doesn't justify it at all.
We stockpile stuff all over and we use it as we need it.
And.
We don't, you don't, you just, don't just take a pile of stuff out and dump it somewhere. You wait until you need it, and then you utilize it.
Can, can I ask a question? If, let's talk about that concrete pile. If we don't think that it's feasible to put it on the roads, is it feasible to sell it? Can we market it to sell it? The only reason why I say that is because my son works for a company that is crushing concrete, and, you know, he said there's probably a resale value of it. I've also talked to, to Michael a little bit, and I'm supposed to get his boss's telephone number for Michael so that he can kind of call and talk, because like Colin's company that he works for, they just did two driveways at Great Plains using crushed concrete as the material. And so, you know, I visited with Michael that maybe Todd might have some, you know, give them some, a little bit of help. Because I honestly think I wouldn't have the slightest clue what to do with crushed concrete.
It's just like rock.
So, you know, and Michael said he thought it was a little bit dirty, but like with Colin, he said that when they're crushing it now, they're putting loads of dirt in with it because that's what gets it to bind. So, it may just be that they just need to take some time to, to visit with some people that utilize it on a regular basis, and then if they don't, maybe they can offer it to, for sale.
I would like to know why this isn't a perfect example of when we could utilize an engineering expertise to tell us what kind of mix ratio we could use and where, and how that can be integrated into our needs. You know, we have specific needs in specific areas of the county. I've heard a lot about the, they call it the white rock or whatever, that's kind of up to the northwest, and that people really like that up there, and that we haven't really sought any of that out. You know, there's the red rock, and there's stuff we've been buying from AIPAC, and we have all these variations of, of materials that we're using, and we have no centralized system or expertise in determining what we can do for any kind of mix ratio. It doesn't mean that we haul everything we have to a central location and mix it all and go back and spread it out. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that we pinpoint and locate where we have specific issues, and we talk to someone who has the experience in formulating a plan. We still have no plan. We've used a little bit of that crushed concrete and some sloshy, muddy, kind of non-gravelled areas that are just too much dirt to maintain, and it has somewhat alleviated the problem. It hasn't fixed the roads per se. I don't know that you're going to actually fix something like that. We're just trying to maintain that additional five hundred miles of dirt on top of our five hundred miles of gravel. I'm just rounding off numbers. But these are the kinds of things where if we don't formulate a plan, we're never going to execute it, let alone the timeframe in which we can debate whether the execution. The timeframe doesn't matter. If you don't even have the plan to begin with, it's not going to happen. And I would think that an engineer should have enough knowledge to be able to look at the material, see what else we're using. You know, if we're going to make a room up there, there's no reason that we can't have, we're spending, what, over four hundred thousand dollars on two graders, less than a quarter of that, well, a quarter of it on gravel itself from our local pits. You know, there's no reason that we can't make purchases like a sifter and some other things so that we can have some material to go and grab when we know we have a problem area. We don't want to deal with it again for ten years.
Do you know where we were at? It's part of revolutions.
The ambulance ride offs.
Yeah, the ride offs and the ambulance. I would move an approved revolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight. Ride offs for the ambulance service.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Motion to adjourn. Okay, Resolution Ninety-nine thirty-five, we need amended. I guess it's amended. We have added repair, restore, rehabilitate the nursing home facility in amount not to exceed thirty thousand with the capital, multi-year capital improvement plan. And Don, did you say you destructed one amount?
Uh, yeah, I taken out the repeater because we added that like in two thousand and nine.
Okay.
I have a question. This option to replace the handicap accessible transportation bus, does the transportation bus, it's not a separate fund?
Um, we levy sixteen, well, no, sorry, twenty thousand in the county general fund.
General.
And then we transfer it to the transportation bus fund. I do two transfers a year.
So, why are they not budgeting themselves for capital outlay expenses such as this?
I, I think they do, but we will only give them X amount of dollars. And the state will only give them X amount of dollars, and normally that's just enough to run the bus. Now, this past time that we replaced a bus, the, they applied for a grant, and the grant had enough, and I can't remember.
Where does their income get registered?
It gets, goes into Fund Seventy-Five.
Is that through your office? The clerk's office does that? You receive?
We receive it, yes, we do. I would have to look to see if you give me a chance. I don't, I don't remember if we had a check out of the capital improvement fund for the difference of the last payment that they purchased, or if they have enough funds to do that.
My suggestion would be to combine your election equipment, number, election equipment number six into computer equipment number four. Replace or purchase equipment for county clerk's office, county treasurer's office, county appraiser's office, refuse, and register of deeds. Leaving us nine items.
And you just consider the election equipment computer equipment, or are we just striking computer out completely?
You can strike computer and just use equipment, equipment for those offices. That consolidates us to nine, and then I would propose that we add number ten for professional services thought, because the commissioners don't have enough of a budget to seek our own professional services, and I think this might be a really good year to contract a few outside influences to kind of help us assess some of our shortcomings. And that would be a really, a good place to take that money from, because we don't financially support our budget to have any external expenses.
Can I say, this doesn't have to be done today. You want to maybe put that on as a
Yeah.
discussion item for.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, because I, I just did it because I didn't want to forget to include it if we were earmarking the machine home. But if you guys are okay with that, I mean, we can, because then you can like take the time to evaluate it more, if that's what you want to do. I, I just don't want to forget to do that if we're going to do thirty thousand.
Could you please just put that on the agenda for, for next, are we meeting Tuesday?
I, yes, and I did the agenda already.
Oh, well, it's Friday, so, okay.
So.
The following Monday?
Okay. Not that we can't amend it, might need to go correct it.
No, I think that's, yes, I, I appreciate you saying that, because six hundred and ninety-two thousand is a lot of money that we can look at in, you know, in, in our needs and where that's going to be most useful.
And I honestly, I have no idea, you know, the equipment, or like the walking bottom trailer, but I can, in a week's time, I can look to see what we paid.
If we had some general ideas of just, you know, a low and a high number.
Okay, so, we're going to table that one.
Yeah, it's fine. Was that all of them, Don?
That was all of them. So, we give you the originals to sign minus the one.
Okay.
Double check and triple check the dates and the things. Let me try that, everybody. Well, if it's something I did, just like I talked about for capital improvement fund, yes, there are the statutes that always go back to the fund if you, if you guys decide that it's there and you don't need it anymore, you can always go back.
You can transfer back into your fund from your capital outlay. Or what about your special machinery?
Yes, you can transfer back.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
Okay, is anything else, Don?
Oh, no, the only thing that I would say is longevity pay goes out by the January fifteenth, so if you want to be thinking about what you want to give for cost of living raises, I think Deborah will probably mention it on Tuesday when she comes with the job descriptions, whatever grouping that you guys are supposed to be working on. But we'll have to, that, our handbook says that we issue those out on January fifteenth, so. Kind of give you a couple of weeks to think about it. I think all in all, every fund kind of ended well, the ambulance, we need to, we just haven't had time.
Have you had a, no, no bids on the billing?
No, I, I just need to get, we have to have time to get to working on that. And I did get two thousand and seven, or sorry, two thousand and nine minutes up, I shouldn't say I did, I had Brittany come in and help us get everything converted. It takes about two hours per year to get everything converted and uploaded. They don't look nice. Hannah hasn't gone to pretty them up. But they're up, so it's taking, it just takes time. And I'll probably start working on resolutions, at least getting, we'll have to scan the resolutions, because I just don't feel comfortable putting the ones up that aren't signed, especially in case something changed in them and I didn't get that recorded, so, but we'll get to working on that too. Just, we got at least one thing accomplished. Has paid somebody to come in and help me, because we just have not had time, so.
Good, thank you.
But we, we're going to, I, I need to make it a priority for the ambulance, because it's just getting, I know it's getting cumbersome.
Do you think it's going to be much more expensive for us to pay that out instead of your office doing it?
I really don't think so, because if I understood Jeff right, because he, they audit auto accounting as well, I'm almost positive that they said the lady charges per run, like as amount of dollars per run. And I want to say it's like nine dollars per run or ten, but let's say if it's even fifteen dollars per run and we have, you know, three hundred billable runs, that can kind of give you an idea of the cost. It may be a little bit more, but they may be more successful at getting payment too, because my understanding, like if we went with the lady that's from Dulphus, my understanding is the, is the husband helps with the collection, and they, that they get kind of aggressive with that, so, which is more so than what we do, because we just don't really have the time. We used to contract with Central States, and we were very, very aggressive, but then the, they just stopped collecting, so. I don't know. We could always check with the hospitals too and see who they use.
I, I would think that it might be necessary to send out, and maybe you guys have already done this through your office, but just to send out a friendly reminder that we would kind of like a monthly update from the department heads.
I know that a lot of department heads have been asking Deborah about that, and I guess my question for you guys is kind of from what I've been hearing them comment, they don't know, are they supposed to all be coming at the same time? Do we want to kind of span them out so that maybe there's just one or two coming?
I think about her, she's running out, but I'm going to spend the whole meeting with them.
So.
And it depends on when it's convenient for them. I don't think it's supposed to be a cumbersome thing, but it's just supposed to be a point of contact on a regular basis.
I just wondered if maybe they, in their minds, set off that like I want to do the third Monday of every month, and somebody else said I want to do the second Monday, but.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay. And they didn't know for sure when they wanted to start, so I can send something out and just. And they didn't know for sure when they wanted to start, so I can send something out and just so then that way we're not filling the agenda up with just department heads. Okay. Anyways, just wanted to kind of have you start thinking about that.
Thank you. I have one last question, I, I really would like to know why you're both so reluctant to talk about future plans. Terry, you've said things such as, you know, well, you can't do this and you can't do that, but what can we do then? Because I feel like every time I talk about what plans could be or should be, or ideas, um, you know, there's a very negative attitude towards me, and.
We plan for things all the time, just like.
No, there has been no planning, I've been here all year.
Just like the trailer, tobacco, all that stuff, that's all been planned for. So you can pay in a little bit of the time until you're ready for it. But you don't say, okay, in two thousand and eighteen, we're gonna replace tobacco. If there's no need to replace it, why are you replacing it? It's not gonna be worth any more than it is two years.
If there's no need to replace it, then why is it on the list?
So that you don't come up all of a sudden and need a hundred thousand dollars to replace tobacco. It's budgeted in a little bit of the time.
So then don't you think that means that you need a priority list, and if it's not, if it doesn't need replaced in the next few years, that it's low on the priority list? And something that does need replaced relatively soon would be high on the priority list?
Well, it would've been twelve, thirteen years since we replaced it, I suppose. And the trailer, you know, it's ten years or so, I can't remember. But they don't last forever.
Mister Chairman, you've been chairman all year, and you have given, given very little direction. You've given very little opinion or comment. You have spent most of the meetings with your head down, and you have not responded to multiple questions, direct questions to you. Do you feel that you're fulfilling your duty as a commissioner?
I don't think that it's the chairman's job to direct us. I don't feel like it.
Think I've offered my opinion on things that I need to offer, and if I don't need to comment, I don't feel the need to, to talk, I guess.
So am I, am I to assume that you're both comfortable with the last decade and that you feel that everything has been accomplished at its maximum potential and that efficiency level is superb?
I think there's always room for improvement, and I think a lot of things could be accomplished. But everything accomplished is spending money. So. You know, you're, you're supposed to be so big on not spending money, but you keep wanting to do all these things that cost money.
Big on not spending money, no, it, I've never said those words, so I don't know why you're putting those words.
Okay. When you spend money, where does the money come from? Taxes. Your big thing is no taxes. So where's the money gonna come from to accomplish all this stuff that you're wanting to accomplish?
Okay, first of all, when have I ever said no taxes?
Well, no. You, you multiple times said that we're, have the highest tax and all this, and we're one of the highest tax counties, so. I assume from that that you wanna reduce the amount of taxes.
Okay.
Okay.
And you think that that's not possible?
No, I, I'm not saying it's not possible, what I'm saying is that all these things that you're suggesting that we do cost money, that money comes from taxes.
There is money to be spent, first of all.
Where did that money come from? At some point it'll have to be replaced. Where does that money gonna come from? It's gonna come from taxes.
Okay. So the part of the equation that you're leaving out, intentionally or not, is the efficiency?
We're not gonna be any more efficient if we replace a backhoe that doesn't need to be replaced. We're not gonna be any more efficient if we replace a walking floor trailer that doesn't need to be replaced.
How can we improve efficiency?
I guess it depends on what, in what area you're talking about.
Whatever you think is the primary area of concern.
I think we, every year, try to push efficiency by when we start setting the budget and we tell the people that we need to limit their expenditures. They're trying to be as efficient as they can, they're there every day, they know what they can change to be more efficient. I guarantee you that there's, they come in here with budgets that we don't approve, that we cut them back, and they have to live within those, so they have to become more efficient. There's always ways to improve, I think there's always improvement, uh, room for improvement, but uh, I don't know that we're going to sit here as a, three commissioners and, and be able to dictate the way that they're gonna improve. We've got to have an open dialogue with them.
So what is your primary area of concern?
What is my area of concern? I don't know that I have a primary area of concern, I'm concerned about the whole thing. Try to balance it as closely as I can.
So what can we do at the turn of the year, beginning a whole new year on a whole new budget, what can we do as a board of commissioners to?
I think we can be extremely supportive of the staff we have, and we can talk to them in a positive way to encourage them to do their job to the best of their ability, and for us to analyze the things that they tell us and treat them with great respect.
So then you don't see yourself as a supervisory personnel?
I don't supervise the departments, I basically set the county budget and try to make sure that everything's working in the county.
Well, that explains a lot, if you, if you think that that's your role as an elected official that's governing the, the finances of the county.
Is there anything else come before this commission? Stand adjourned till ten o'clock Tuesday morning.